Brazos County, we have a recalcitrational 88-28 to the NAM commission for the county of population bill to establish savings with 1.6. For side one, the agenda's implication page, please, which US takes flag and commissioner of all the proceedings.
Creator of all we know, and all we do not yet know, we acknowledge you as all. Thank you for your blessings. Help us seek your wisdom. Grant your strength and wisdom to us. This is a day you've made. Help us rejoice and be glad in all the people set. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, my place needs to be Texas, one state of God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Second, side one, agenda's call for citizens input and our concerns. Here now will consider take action on agenda items three through nineteen. Number three's approval of nonprofit organization application using Brazos County work inmate or crew labor on July fourth, twenty eighteen, for the District Two Volunteer Fire Department annual curtain fireworks show. They're in need of assistance with preparation of the event cleanup activity. Made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number four is approval to issue a diner's credit card to the expo employee car company for the use of travel as well as purchases for advertising for other purchases to vendors that do not accept purchasers. Much make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number five was considered taking hospital action in Kansas place in Rock Prairie West project city car station. Approved approval. Second, most make second. We'll probably discuss this, but this is true. This is a portion of Rock Prairie West where it was in city limits on one side and then there's a, I think, fifteen hundred foot that's in the county and then it goes back into city limits. It runs through a mobile home park out there on Rock Prairie West. And the school district, College Station School District, currently out leave building the school, is it an elementary school commissioner?
Yes.
Right there in that location. So College Station has designed that Rock Prairie West to be a three lane with curb gutters, underground storm, and sidewalks to meet county, or meet city standards. In early discussions, we talked with the city that we would participate at a level more like what the county would normally spend on a county road. But that county portion was a pretty expensive, well, the whole project is an expensive project. It's an high dollar project. But the county portion was, they calculated it costing about 1.8 million. We, Commissioner Aldridge and I went out and discussed with some staff at College Station and finally came to a figure that I felt like I could support, I think Commissioner Aldridge can support, at 1.2 million participation. If the court agrees and we move forward with it, the city would then take over the maintenance of that portion of what is now county road and we would not, we would not have to deal with that portion anymore. So, and the road we were, we stayed, would be designed and built the same way all the way through that portion. I mean, there were some concerns certainly with whether it's kids or people walking and going to school and then running out of sidewalk, having to walk down the edge of the road for that fifteen hundred foot before they actually reached a sidewalk again. And so it just seemed like maybe the best thing was to do was to see if we couldn't get this thing settled and get it all built exactly the same, that roadway the same, even through the county portion. And then the county, I mean, the city take over maintenance at that point. I don't know, you may have other comments?
No, I would just like to thank you because I think what we see in the community and particularly in precinct one is, is a lot of the decisions that are being made are driven by need for access to public facilities such as schools. And I think I'm very pleased that we have the opportunity to have a collaborative effort between the city of College Station, which was created by a need of College Station independent school district and Brazos County. So I thank you for your efforts in that regard.
Judge, did I understand that you're saying the county would participate at 1.2 million?
That's what I was.
And do we have an agreement to?
We'll put the agreement on next week.
Oh, okay.
We just needed to go before the commissioners' court to discuss. And I don't know that we really have to take action today. I just wanted to bring it to the court, let everybody hear what the discussion is. And if we would've just done, just did our part of the road that we had there, what did you say that would've cost? Probably seven hundred thousand dollars. So it's, it's an increase above what it would've cost us, but we had looked at potentially trying to build a sidewalk outside of the right away, the current right away that's there. The problem is, is it goes through a mobile home park. And those mobile homes are right up against the county right away. And so we weren't even sure we could make a sidewalk work to get around it. I mean, there would, by doing those sorts of things, it would, the price would've increased certainly, but it was gonna be difficult to make it. We ran into a lot of problems and it just seemed to me like the best way to handle it is, they can make all that fit in the city. Their design will all fit in that with a three lane and the sidewalks and the underground storm water. So, yeah, it's, it's an increase above what it would've cost us if we were just building a county road. But the problem is we've got that, that school that's being built and that's gonna increase the traffic in that area. I think long term, it's just, it's just a better way to handle it.
Well, one of the things I think that we'll also have the opportunity to achieve is in scheduling for the benefit of the entire community, in bidding, in mobilization costs, if we have it all done simultaneously. There are some cost savings for both the county and the city. The issue was is how we come to a point where we have an equitable sharing of the cost to the benefit and then the result of magnitudes. The road conditions out there are not at the point of where they would really warrant, looking at our road conditions index, what we would, that we would really need to do something here. But with the opportunity to be able to hopefully collaborate with the city of College Station, this would give us an opportunity to generate some cost savings as well as convenience to the community while we're making a community improvement.
Not really a problem, but I mean, I understand why we're doing it and why we need to. It's just that sometimes I have a problem trying to decide that, you know, if we, if we would do it, what we require county wise and that to cost, as the judge says, seven hundred thousand and then because the school system built a school there in the city of College Station, everybody wants, everybody going together and split the bill, it's gonna cost us another half million dollars for make sure we have a sidewalk. I guess sometimes I just don't know if, if that's accounting responsibility you pay for that when, you know, you look at your tax bills and the school system, this is the elephant in the room, and here we're gonna spend a half million dollars to make sure we got a sidewalk going down our part of the road. I mean, I understand why we're doing it, what we need to do, but sometimes we might lose, lose back to what really, where our money needs to go.
Well, it is more than just a sidewalk. It's going from two lanes to a three lane. And I, I hear what you're saying.
And my, and my precinct, we have a lot of roads that are still gravel that people are, you know, they've been in the dust for a lot of years. And here we're going in, practically in the city and spend a million too. You know, sometimes you just gotta, you gotta stop, take a look at that. Like I said, I understand why we're doing it.
Well, we'll have an opportunity to do that because there will be the necessity of a action in the form of an interlocal agreement that will come up and we can have further conversations in between on that. I think that, I think this is indicative of one of the things that we need to be thinking about with the rapid growth dynamic we have in our community is, is areas where we can collaborate for the benefit of a large number of citizens. And I'm very pleased that this is a precinct one project, but I do think that if you take a look at what's happening in the rest of the county with the ETJ, with the city of Bryan, with Relus, and some of the things that we're gonna require there, that, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, this is gonna put a whole different paradigm in our budgeting process for this year and I look forward to those conversations too.
I agree with you. I understand where you're coming from, but at the same point, in time, I, I don't think that we can, we can jump in there and put the bill for everything that everybody wants to do, you know, with the city of Bryan, city of College Station, school district, whatever, because they're always coming to us wanting us to, you know, to come in with them and do this or do that when it's their responsibility. You know, we don't, we don't ask College Station or Bryan to come pave road out of the county, you know, they'd say we're crazy, you know? And it's, when you look at it in the simplest form, that's basically the same thing. So, I mean, I don't know where you're coming from, it's just something that we need to, we need to look at and make sure that we have X number of dollars, we need to make sure that we take care of the people in the county with those dollars before we decide to do things with the city of College Station or city of Bryan.
I concur.
Or cases A and M or Relus or whoever, you know, we have a lot of people take care of them.
I do agree with you Commissioner Catalina. And in precinct four, we have not a similar situation, but we have the Sandy Point Road with no sidewalks and the public is asking for our support and contribution of funds which we haven't been able to sign. So I am not speaking against the possible action that we're taking here, but I think we're gonna have to find ways of collaborating with all areas and not just certain areas of our county.
Well, then, Judge, I think what proposition, power to the level to the possibility of building a, of building a street.
And I understand that, but I've got people that are walking in the street to get out of their community because they're in a sidewalk. Safety is an issue for, for all of us.
Judge, I wanted to ask that when you're agreeing the interlocal agreement, can we determine if the city College Station is gonna annex it? Um, there's no very, there's very few roads where, because we own the road, that portion, so it's gonna stay on our books, but for maintenance, if city College Station is gonna maintain, would really additionally, those become annexed roads and it would, it actually put a clause on our books, like the whole jurisdiction. But anyway, I guess maybe, I think there's only one other area that I know of where we agree that somebody else will maintain one of our roads. I'm just asking for a, several continuation of, if we try and, just for a question.
I don't think that she is interested in annexing. In the changing next just the road. I think they actually took a look at that to see whether that was possible, but it leaves two, there's already a, an island out there and then you'd cut through the middle of the island. It's, it's a mobile home park and I don't think the city had an interest in, in bringing the mobile home park into the city. That's my belief, so. So I think the maintenance would have to come through a, an interlocal.
No, that's trying to figure out.
I understand. Is there any more discussion? I don't know, do we need to take any action today?
We do have a motion in the second on the table though.
Oh, we do? Okay, well then, it's a, I guess it's a motion to consider.
Participate.
A motion to, okay.
Yeah, participation.
A motion is to consider.
So, and I think that this is an area I'm aware of because of precinct one, but I think there are a number of other areas throughout Brazos County that we need to evaluate, prioritize, and take a look collectively when we have our budget sessions and working with road and bridge where we come to something that is a working resolution to some of these needs to where we have them in common with the city of Bryan ETJ as well as the city of College Station ETJ where we can collaborate and save the money and I think that we're, we can all benefit as a community because ultimately to a huge degree, all the money's come down in the same pockets and that's just a necessity and important need. So thank you for your consideration. My motion is to improve and reconsider this.
And that motion is second to consider. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries, we'll have that on the agenda probably next year. Number six is permission to sell two galvanized cupboards to Burleson County pursuant to local government code two sixty-three, one point one fifty-two. These cupboards are surplus and no longer needed for road and bridge department. A is a forty-eight by fifty for eleven hundred and seventy dollars and B is seventy-two by fifty for sixteen hundred and twenty-five. Approved approval.
A, second. A and B.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries, seven, to the local government of city of Bryan, allowing for provision of paramedic support with the sheriff's office tactical team. Move approval. Second, most make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number eight's approval of the following committee for evaluation of RFP eighteen dash zero eight-nine video surveillance upgrade for Brazos County detention center. A, say Catalina. B, Captain Stewart. C, Neil Lee. D, Trevor Mandan. E, Juanne Dickie. F, legal non-voting. G is the first seen on the.
How much approval? A through T.
Second, motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Now, contract eighteen dash zero two-five with Hunt, Cat for emergency management generator that will be located at Brazos Center. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number ten's award for RFP eighteen dash one-one-one appraisal and approve, approval of warranty contract recommended by eleven associates.
What approval?
Second. Most make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number twelve, permission dash, uh, eighteen dash one-three-three various aggregates, coal mix and other. Move approval.
Second.
Most make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number thirteen, dual of eighteen dash one thirty-seven art collection to liquid property taxes with McCrery, the cell of Braggell.
What approval?
Second, motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number fourteen, expenditure journal entries for FY seventeen slash eighteen, zero four zero zero eight-three through zero four zero zero nine-three, zero five zero 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 one through zero five zero zero three. That was two, should've been three zeros.
Okay.
And then zero five zero zero, zero five through zero five zero 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 six. Most make second discussion.
Um, Judge, was it looking at the, was there one correction to one of those numbers?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I just didn't, I said two zeros and.
I called you just after.
Yeah. Uh, did we go?
No, you're not there.
Okay, motion, uh, good, make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number fifteen, budget members, FY seventeen slash eighteen, thirty-one point one through thirty-one point two. Move approval. Second, most make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Sixty, personnel change status.
What approval?
Second, most make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number seventeen's payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number seven zero zero.
Eight.
I mean, I'm sorry, eight zero zero three five four nine through claim number eight zero zero three seven six nine. Second, most make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Sixty, personnel change status.
What approval?
Second, most make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number seventeen's payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number seven zero zero.
Eight.
I mean, I'm sorry, eight zero zero three five four nine through claim number eight zero zero three seven six nine. Second, most make second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number seven carries. Number twenty is an acknowledgement of Brazos Valley Council of Government's independent auditors reporting financial statements for the fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty seventeen. Number twenty-one, sheriff's report on inmate population lane.
Come on, Judge, commissioners, six hundred and ten, who are peeping the last twenty-four hours, five hundred and eleven men, ninety-nine women, forty-three young electronic monitoring and eleven.
Okay, thank you. Number twenty-two is National Venture Times and possible future gender topics. Period nine, and number twenty-three is considering for its call for citizens input and all concerns. Period nine, and back up to number eighteen, convenient executive session pursuant to Texas government code section five five one, from zero seven, we're gonna discuss the enforcement of law and evaluation of each assignment. These discipline are our dismissed by position risk manager. And we'll need Jennifer's ear, cord, candy, and, and returns. I think our elevator speaks, by the way. I saw, I think our elevator is fixed and so, give me, give me the thumbs up, Walter Coe.
All right. That's what that was out there. You can move your office.
Move back upstairs.
Judge, for the record.
Our time is ten twenty-four. I'll have you do that in session tomorrow.
Yeah. Uh, maybe any. Oh, sure. Yeah, I, I.
All right. These are the.
I have these right here. Oh. Sorry. I'm, I feel sick, I'll get a coffee. We're still grassy. Very quick. It's very, very cold. All right. There's. I think he used to be in there. Yeah, but it's very, very, like, I don't know. I actually want to leave there. I think. I don't know. 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 And she, the thing is, is that her disability gave her a three month, twenty dollars, thirty million dollars. So I was gonna give five hundred to my dad, five hundred to my sister, five hundred to me. I had to gas and, 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 that's all the work. And, and, but I can't cash it to her account or to the, to, uh, what if they, if I need, they just need, they just need a letter of testament, but you gotta provide it. They said I can also do a small sedative. I've got it written down. I'll bring it all with me. Small sedative. Yeah, I think you can come, I'm trying to get out, so. Oh, it's fine. And it's been my fault, I was on vacation the week I was supposed to go there and then Tommy called me, I'm fishing with my dad on the boat. She goes, you're curious? Oh, I'm fishing. You can go see her. I got sea floe. I'll go back to Monday. She's, 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 she's,[1786.12]
There's no action to be taken and the next item is to adjourn.
Thank you.